You just thought it was a box.
Yep. Is there any rhyme or reason to the rubber bands? Is it just to keep them together?
Just to keep them together, because sometimes...
I don't know if some of them are...
The staples don't...
No, you... Yeah, you don't have to put them together. Marcy will.
Well, just because it's such a mess over here. I started rubber banding them, but I don't know if they were supposed to be for like in different departments or something. Okay. It was running out of room over here.
No, Highway 13 to 83 down here, but I know that.
Those lights?
Those lights that are on at night at the intersection? We pay for those.
Yep. That one lighted on at Lakewood, that was kind of a camp row.
That wasn't?
No, it was lit by a fish cleaning. So I had to call Jack Doc to do it.
There's a lot of well sparring in there. All their cards. All their what? All their cards they use to... Oh, sure.
All right, Denise is here.
Good.
So we can...
We should have watched busy.
Oh, yeah.
We went to the bathroom.
Okay. Did you want to call our gal? She was here, she wanted to sit in. What's the last of the bills?
This is it right here. I got three more here, that's it.
We're just gonna finish this just quickly. They didn't have her full and unwarranted detention.
That's not always necessarily the...
Well, that's what you get. Well, I think we can start now, so go ahead Denise.
Okay. I've got quite a few abatements going on here that we're gonna look at. With Sarah's spreadsheet that she had for the farm residence exemption last year. She had marked that they're active farmer or vacant or whatever, but the paperwork didn't come in. Some of them, she went and changed them to taxable then because their paperwork wasn't in. Others, she didn't change. And I didn't figure that out, that she had done any until a month or so ago when I went through and did an audit of all the paperwork that I had. So there are two, three, four, five, six, seven. That are just strictly that issue only.
Just farm residence abatements basically?
Well, they shouldn't have been taxed and they were.
They were active or not active?
Huh?
They were inactive or not?
Well, they didn't get the paperwork in last year, so Sarah put them back on as taxable, but they did get the paperwork in this year. And I just saw that they were active last year, they're active now. So I didn't go looking to change anything. But apparently she had put them back on the tax rolls. So these are reducing their taxes back to egg exempt, or farm residence exemption. So I got seven of those. I've got... I've got three due to the homestead credits that people came in later and applied for the homestead credit and did get approved, so there's three abatements for that. I've got three here that I am actually gonna shuffle to next month. These are people that had traditionally been approved in the past that are no longer active, or qualified farm residence exemptions. Some because of income, some because of like they have a second house and when I talk to them further, they're using that second house more for family members to come and stay and things like that. So it's not really a vacant home. They're using it for personal use. So those homes need to come off. I've got a new exemption that they've never applied for. That is on here, so they've got a reduction for that one. But all the ones that are being increased, I'm leaving to next month because there's looking to be quite a few more. As these last stragglers of 75 apps that never got turned in earlier this year, I sent them a 10-day notice that they either need to get their paperwork in or they're gonna be taxed. A lot of them, I'm finding out, are people that aren't qualified and just aren't doing the paperwork because they don't understand it or don't know what to do with that when they don't fit the status quo. Like I've had two people that say, "Oh, I've got so-and-so living in that house." You know, "They work full-time jobs, but every once in a while when I need to call them and ask them to go fix his fence or do some help around the farm, they'll help me so I don't pay any taxes for them." And they're calling them farm labors. Well, that's only if they have work for them, you know, little side jobs, it's not a farm, a true farm laborer. So those have been incorrectly identified. I've got a couple more that their income, because they have side businesses, and those side businesses income don't allow them to meet the income requirements. So I've done probably six assessments on there already. These... The reason why I'm not submitting them until next month is because I wanna get the letter of evaluation out to them first, so then next month they have an opportunity if they wanna come and protest or not. So that's why we're not gonna mess with those quite yet. So there's lots of different reasons that they're coming on and off. Only those seven were truly an error that they never should have been to start with. So... But as of Friday when I last worked, there's probably at least 40 of the applications of those 75 that still hadn't gotten me or contacted me. Since I forgot the overlap with my medical appointments this week, the ones that would have come in are left messages for me yesterday or today. I've given... I'll give them a little extension there, otherwise the others are gonna get assessed. The reason why they weren't done earlier in the year is when there were only half of them to begin with, and then when I found all the negatives, Marcy and I had talked about, we didn't want to do any adjustments that lowered the tax base, otherwise that would increase your mail levies. So we left them out to do afterwards. So... Any questions on those?
So Denise, the ones that you're bringing in next month, what, you wanna explain to the commissioners?
Those are the additions, so people...
Those are like the omitted ones, right?
Yeah, yep, yep. The people that aren't getting their paperwork in that I have to go and put values on. And the ones that haven't qualified when they brought their paperwork in. So those are gonna be the add-ons where these are mainly out reductions.
So would it be a true statement that some of these that don't turn in their paperwork, they're going to get a tax bill with a new assessment?
Correct.
And then if they would qualify or they do, then you're most likely gonna see paperwork for some kind of abatement?
Potentially.
Good.
And that's where we're gonna have to decide, or you guys will have to decide if you want to allow them when they've been late already.
You mean allow them to get an abatement or allow them to be exempted?
Both.
Because I...
Because you can get the... You can get the abatement, but you can then deny it because the paperwork wasn't done in a timely manner.
Right, but if they do the abatement and they do qualify for it, then it's pretty difficult to turn down the abatement other than just, just to try and prove a point on getting your paperwork in, basically is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there are other counties who do that. It's pretty black and white, you don't have your paperwork in on time here.
Can you do that legally though, I wonder?
What's that?
Is it legal to do that though?
Yeah. Yep, yep. It is legal to deny them on those terms. It's not like they didn't have an opportunity when they had multiple mail levers on it. There's far too many of them for me to spend time calling each one. So...
So today you have...
And I know like, Leonard, your son, I believe, I sent a letter to him because he didn't have paperwork done in time. So like he would be one of those in that situation.
Where'd you send it to, being he moved? You know what I'm saying?
What's that?
He just moved this summer, so my question is where'd you send it to? Did it go to Lincoln or did it go to X-Way?
Um, I think it went to Lincoln because he still, as of today, has not updated his address here.
That could be part of the problem right there, you know? I don't know, and you know, I don't know if they're forwarding, and I'm sure they left the forwarding address, but you know how that works.
Right.
A lot of times that mail service just don't...
Well, I know that first mailing...
Yeah, I can get you that.
You pay man and ask me a bunch of questions on them, so I know they got the first mailing.
But at that time, I think they were still up there. They were still up in Lincoln at that time when I talked to you.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, when he did, you know, so I'll see if I can get you an updated address on that, okay?
Yep. Yep. And I know Ardell's son, that's another one.
But he wanted to come in Monday, but of course he...
Yes, and that's where I said I was...
And I have one downstairs, and we had like three people yesterday, so they probably come back.
Yeah.
So Denise, my question, you wanna add them the next month after you have, so you wanna add next month?
Yeah.
So our taxes will all be run by next month?
Um, by the time we have commissioner meeting you...
They'll be run by Thanksgiving shortly after.
Okay, then those are gonna be the ones that we just pull and make the hand adjustments to?
So doesn't that affect our uncollected letter? Like, you know, I know we're running it all program, but if we're adding value, you know...
We're not adding value, we're adding tax. So it's the same reverse process as an abatement, when we're just subtracting the taxable bill, or not the taxable value, we're subtracting the taxes over here, we'll be adding them. And that was another thing that Marcy had brought up, that when you remove taxes through an abatement, it doesn't actually filter down to the different taxable entities, is that correct?
When we, when I abate, we've abated taxes, we've been doing that for a long time.
Right.
This omitted taxes, where you add taxes on, is something new that everyone's coming, never done before.
Nope, that's not what I asked. With the abatements, you said the...
Oh, yeah.
When you reduce that, does that trickle down to the...
Entities.
Okay. Okay. I thought you said it didn't, so you didn't want all those refunds sitting at the county level?
No, the abatements trickle down, yeah.
Okay, okay. So the same thing would happen with the omitted taxes. And that's where I wanted it not to be too kittywampus, that it affected us as a county, but it does trickle down to the...
We're just a little concerned in the Auditor and Treasurers Office that it's gonna mess up our uncollected, it's gonna mess up our apportionment, because we've never done an omitted tax where we've added a tax statement on before. And another thing that concerns me is in August, we mailed out all these estimated tax statements and these taxpayers, they know what their valuations are and what their taxes were gonna be, and they could've came to the budget here and whatever, and now all of a sudden we're gonna do another tax statement on them. You know what I'm saying? I'm a little concerned how this is, how some of our taxpayers are gonna feel about this, you know?
Well, number one, I, on most of these, I've already talked to them because they've either, and the ones so far have been ones that I've talked to that I've said, "Your taxes were higher and an error, and we need to do an abatement to reduce them." Or I've talked to them and said, you know, that they don't qualify any longer for this, so they know they're, they're getting an increase. They'll get a letter of valuation that tells them what that tax increase possibly could be using the same sample, or not sample, but preliminary mail levies that you use. So they're gonna get that out in their letter of what those increases are. And as far as, I don't know how your, what'd you call them?
Or uncollected and our apportionment, and Ardell, what other concerns do we have?
Well, you know, and it's not affecting the valuation at all, is what you're saying, right?
That's correct.
So total county valuation, what we are expecting in dollars is what our uncollected is, right? So for a full year, a million dollars we're expecting. But I see what you're saying now, so we're gonna subtract some, it's totally not gonna affect the value though.
What, it's not, it's not affecting the value?
So it's actually gonna abate some, you're gonna add some, and it's gonna be, it's gonna show up kinda as a manual transaction when we send out to the entities. Right now, we do, we have to manually say, "This much was abated out of your city general."
Yeah.
And so we're gonna say, "This much was abated, this much was added."
Yeah.
On, it's gonna kinda be a manual sheet. Okay, I get it. It, I guess it, it would work kinda.
Yeah.
I thought it was affecting the total valuation.
No.
For our total uncollected, which it isn't. It's kind of a manual entry every time we apportion them abatements and then add the taxes. Okay, got it.
And this isn't what I'm gonna be expecting to do every year, this many, this late.
Right.
But hopefully, now we've got the processes in place and I know what's going on, I'm not to be able to do this in a more timely manner than we are this year.
And how many bills do you think you're gonna mail this year?
So how many years was that a rate that they, that they do that? Were they, for the farmers to, you know, if they have an extra house or a house, or if they had to come in and file paperwork? That's only been for a few years now, right?
Um, it's actually been quite a few years. I don't think you guys implemented it here.
Because I don't remember that year.
Cause I have like...
To come, you know, come in and file paperwork to see if we have our whole homes exempted or not, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's where a lot of confusion probably comes in, people, "Well, what's this for?"
And that's why I did the second notice, saying, "I didn't receive this, you need to get this done yet." You know, some of them, when I talked to them, have the old houses that are basically ready to fall over if the wind hits them just right. You know, North Dakota requires that all homes are taxable unless there's an exemption in place. And that's the exemption thing that we're working on. Now, I've seen notes in some people's files, like, "Oh, she's a retired spouse of an active farmer, a retired farmer, she no longer has to fill out this paperwork anymore." That is untrue, as it's supposed to be every year, but I do recognize the, like the old homes that are never gonna be lived in again because they're barely a home even. And those, I said, you know, "I've got that catch 22, I'd like to send it out last time," but then people forget what it is, and they say they've never seen the paperwork before. And I pulled up their 2019 form and it's right there that they filled it out. So they forget. If you send it every year, they're gonna remember, now they have to just sign date, check the boxes, and return it, you know? But otherwise, if I do it every two, three years, then they're, "Oh, I've never seen this before and I've never had to do this before." You know, because it's been so many years. So I'm sorta caught in the middle with those, but that is why I added a question on there, "Has it been vacant for more than five years?" Because usually those ones that have been vacant for more than five years are gonna be the unlivable ones. But I haven't decided yet what, how often we should be sending those out. But like the retired ones, over in Dickey County, at a certain point, they decided, "Once I retire, you never have to send that form out again." Well, that's not true, because then we ended up having so many people who have moved to town, other people are living in the house, you know, they rented it out, or they have their son living there, and that paperwork's never been caught up to what's actually going on. So that's where I put in their letter, you know, "As long as you're still living there and haven't went out and got a new full-time job, you can check yes and sign date return." You know? So it's hard when you only do it every so often, then people forget, they say, "Oh, I've never seen this before."
Good. So for the most part for today, you got just a couple of abatements and stuff that you need to...
Eleven of them.
Okay. That you need approved?
Yep.
Okay. Josh, Josh, come grab them.
Okay.
So Denise, when you're sending out these letters, when they're submitted, I think we're putting out like a hearing date?
Yep, the next commissioner meeting. That's why I didn't wanna present them today, even though I have them done, they haven't received their letter that tells them that. So they'll receive a letter saying that the first week in December, or the first meeting in December. They've got 14 days to appeal it with me, no matter when that meeting is. So...
So how are you gonna bill them? You know, because they're not gonna get a tax statement, right?
We're gonna have to manually do a tax statement.
Just like you did, just like you do your abatements, you cut first from first. Instead of taking tax on, or taking tax off, they put it on. So it's the same exact process. Any other questions or concerns?
See, well, gets their stuff in, I guess, I don't... I mean, we've always just kinda had a little bit of acceptance on things, I mean, especially when it comes to the abatements on the other side, so I'm gonna guess that if you start taxing some of these folks that are eligible, they're gonna just seek an abatement, so I mean, that's, I mean...
And I'm gonna tell them, yeah, it's up to the commissioners to accept these, but you know, they do have the potential for you guys to deny them. You know, because that does, it adds a burden on to all of us just because they didn't get the paperwork in. And I put that in the letter, "I'm sorry for a 10-day notice, but you've had 10 months."
Nancy, don't ever go in here.
It's in your prick up there. Oh, or on the table.
I picked it up this summer, and I told Josh and the court of courts has been taking names and numbers down of anybody who came home while I was gone, so I know that they put their best foot forward, I just have to be done.
So earlier in the meeting, they also additionally approved for the Braddock Threshers to move a building from Hazleton to Braddock.
Okay.
That those conditions are based on basically them following the proper county ordinances and your approval on the other paperwork, like the moving permit, the fee, make sure they pay the fees. So basically, we've approved it as long as it meets your requirements in your office.
Right.
Because they wanna do it like in the next two to three weeks, well, we're not gonna have a special meeting for that, you know? Nobody's got a problem with them moving the building as long as they do it the proper way, and you're gonna... as long as they do it the proper way, and you're gonna be the one looking over that anyway, so, does that make sense?
Yep, and we had a sign request, a verbal phone call about it. They wanna put up a billboard sign for the elevator by Stosberg, C-H-I, DHS, whatever their name is. And I did tell them that yes, they have to use our regular billing format, building permit form to do that, there's a price on the backside of it of like five cents a square foot or something like that for the permit fee, and they also have to get a state warrant.
Right, cause they're next to the highway right away. Just so you know about that Braddock line, there's a phone call, we think, and we didn't see any issue on our end, it's more so just paperwork, except you're gonna approve, so we figured, if they don't meet your requirements, I think that's, that's up to you on that, but, I mean, we're fine with the rest of it.
Marcy and Ardella, are you guys okay with what we talked about then?
It's just gonna be a learning curve for us, you know, we've never done anything like an extra tax statement, you know?
Well, it won't be an extra tax statement, we'll just edit the one they got.
I don't know, I'd have to talk to Kelly to see how our software is gonna work on that. I don't know how our software works, it's, it's gonna be a learning curve for us, okay?
Oh, I thought we worked through all that. You said just like the abatements before?
Right, but I don't know when we add the taxes, is it gonna create a whole new tax statement, or is it gonna amend the one that the farm residents would go on, that part, so we don't know. I don't, I don't know, we have never done anything for it, but that's why, you know, just conversations between both of my offices, we just had some concerns.
And I wanna make sure they're addressed.
Yeah, we'll see, how many do you have, about you said about?
Eleven of them.
Well, eleven of those right there, there's probably about eleven of them that are coming back on, and if all of those don't have paperwork coming on, that could be another 40. And I hope not, and if it gets down to a manageable number, I will call them, it's just I wasn't gonna sit there trying to look up phone numbers and playing phone tag with a hundred people either.
Okay, so we have these, there's eleven abatements here for the refund taxes, you guys have all seen them, entertain a motion to approve all of them, deny them, table them? Cause they're all basically the same, so...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lightman makes a motion to approve all the tax abatements?
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion on tax abatements? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abatements approved. Okay, you guys are gonna continue to work on the rest of these then, and...
Addition ones.
So there should be an update next month, basically, on who came in and who, I mean, not specifically who, but at least a number of how many came in and on my year to decide on, okay? All right, thanks Denise.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going home and happy.
Don't you have to work?
I had a medical procedure yesterday and...
Oh, so you're off time, you just came into the meeting.
Oh.
I see.
I've just come back from Bismarck now.
Oh, okay, well, happy healing then.
I, I warned Josh that if I start saying anything, you know, it could be the sedatives.
All right, well, there's no more, no more agenda items, there's no more business before the board, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Meeting adjourned.